I'll call the common council meeting for September 28th to order. Roll call, please.
Mr. Schrader.
Here.
Mrs. Schatzinger.
Here.
Mr. Hanson.
Here.
Mr. Gallups.
Here.
Mr. Morrison.
Here.
Mrs. Kane.
Here.
Mr. Wirth.
Here.
Mr. Split.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Our pleasure.
Pleased to be with you. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for the many blessings you have bestowed upon all of us here this evening, our citizens, our community. Father, tonight we pray for health, we pray for safety, we pray for those to get better in many ways. Father, we ask that you guide our deliberations tonight, that we be respectful, that we, everything we decide tonight is pleasing to you, that we represent the city to the best of our abilities. We pray this in your name.
Amen.
All right. Look for a motion to approve the agenda with the suggestion of moving the discussion item of the ATVs to immediately proceed after public comment.
Motion it.
Second.
Has been moved in second. Any discussion on approval of the agenda with that one move?
Is there a reason why we couldn't put it after the proclamations?
The suggestion is simply because most of the audience is here for that particular item. But it's entirely up to you. As a council.
The reason I bring it up is because I do know that there are people here for the proclamations, and I think that the conversation about ATVs, UTVs could take up more time, and I think the proclamations will not take up as much time.
Seems like a reasonable suggestion.
Would anyone like to make that amendment to the motion?
Mover and second, or was it a second? Is that acceptable?
I'll motion that, I agree with it.
Agree with that?
Second.
Yes. All right. All right, so that would be for approving the agenda, putting the discussion item of ATVs after the proclamations. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Agenda is approved. That change. All right, so first item is a pro, or actually do public comment first. We have two people here for public comment. This is an opportunity for citizens to come before the council with comments and concerns on any current city issue, knowing no action will be taken tonight. All that I ask is that you keep a civil and respectful and within five minutes. However, discussion of personnel or of individual members of the council shall not be considered appropriate. I would expect council to treat the citizens with the same respect. First person is Cameron Klein. Please step forward.
Hello, my name's Cameron Klein. I was invited by Jolene Schatzinger to come and visit the council meeting. I am representing Theta Chi fraternity at Ripon College. I'm currently their president. I have two brothers, Ryan and Christian, with me. We are working to obtain a honor status within our fraternity, and one of the initiatives is to become somewhat active in local or state government, starting with attending a meeting. And so I figured this would be a great opportunity for us to come and see what the local government's all about. I just want to say thank you guys for all your work in the city, and that it is noticed by Ripon College students. Thank you.
Thank you, Cameron. Next is Oliver Pepler. Or, I'm sorry, it's not Pepler, it's. Please state your name.
Hi, I'm Oliver Roper, and I am from Ripon Boy Scout Troop 735. And I'm on my path to Eagle, and I need to fulfill a requirement to attend a city council meeting, and so this is that city council meeting. And I just want to say thank you for everyone to, for supporting our community and our council in keeping these public. And I'll be spreading the word to like, or the other Boy Scouts coming in that this is a great way to fulfill that requirement. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, our first of two proclamations. Proclamation proclaiming the month of September 2020 as recovery month. Whereas behavioral health is an essential part of overall wellness for healthy families as well as our community, and whereas individuals with mental health and substance abuse challenges can and do recover to live full and successful lives, and should celebrate those gains made in recovery, just as we celebrate health improvements made by those who are managing other health conditions such as hypertension, diabetes, and asthma. And whereas there is a need to eliminate the stigma that too often prevents individuals from seeking much-needed care by learning more about mental illness, mental illness and substance use, and see, seeing a person for who they are. And whereas dedicated professionals and everyday citizens of the city of Ripon with skills and empathy support individuals with mental health and substance use challenges through the treatment and recovery process with strong messages of hope, support, and respect. And whereas recovery month is celebrated as a national observance held every September to educate Americans that substance abuse, or substance use treatment and mental health services can enable those impacted by substance use and mental health to live a healthy and rewarding life. And whereas the Ripon opioid initiative, part of drug-free communities of Fond du Lac County, seeks to coordinate resources, capacity, and community collaborations, and is committed to utilizing prevention, harm reduction, law enforcement, and treatment strategies to reduce the impact of mental health and substance use challenges, the people of the city of Ripon face through the promotion of recovery-oriented systems of care. Now, therefore, I Theodore Grant, Mayor of the city of Ripon, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2020 as recovery month in the city of Ripon, Wisconsin, and call upon all citizens, parents, youth, youth-serving organizations, governmental agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, hospitals, and schools to support efforts that will assist in eliminating the stigma associated with mental illness and substance misuse, and promote long-term recovery of those individuals needing care. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Ripon, Wisconsin, to be affixed this 28th day of September 2020. I'll first ask if there's anyone from the Ripon opioid initiative in the audience if you'd like to make any comments on this topic. You can step up to the microphone.
Hello, my name is Alex Berg. I'm the coordinator of the Ripon opioid initiative, part of drug-free communities of Fond du Lac County. I first want to say thank you for recognizing September as National Recovery Month. This is something that our Ripon opioid initiative has been celebrating all month and trying to promote awareness around recovery, access to treatment services, and prevention initiatives. Our coalition members who are here behind me today helped put together this proclamation along with Jolene Schatzinger, who has been a longtime member of the Ripon opioid initiative. So, we are very excited to once again this year participate in the National Recovery Month because it's important. Although it's September 28th and almost the end of the month of September, that doesn't mean we need to stop celebrating recovery and showing our support for those who are struggling with addiction and substance use and even mental health issues. We are doing our best to work on prevention efforts in the Ripon community to make sure that we are seeing a decrease in substance misuse along with our youth. We've seen a decrease in misuse of prescription medications among our Ripon youth here, and we've also seen an increase in access to treatment services in the community. So that is one of the great things about being here in Ripon is it's such a supportive community, and we are really looking forward to and appreciate that you guys have also supported this recovery month. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Move to approve the proclamation.
Second. Has been moved by Al and.
Give it to Paige.
And seconded by Paige. Any discussion on this?
Maybe I will just add another voice to say I'm so grateful to have you here, and that for anyone that they themselves are struggling with an addiction, or they have a friend or family member, I want them to know that there are people in this community that are willing to support you, that we see you, we know that recovery as it states here does happen, and, and please reach out for help. I think any one of us around this council know, we know the community resources, we can be a resource for you. Clergy, we have some great mental health resources, collaborative wellness, right downtown Ripon, our Ripon Medical Center. So just know, I want to state out loud that you're not alone, and it's so wonderful that you're here raising this up for our community.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor of approving the proclamation designating month of September 2020 as recovery month, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Proclamation is approved? Thank you. All right, proclamation number two. Yes.
Typically, the mayor will give them the proclamation, so can I just have them come up there and I can get a quick photo with you?
Sure. Do we have one ready to go?
Is that appropriate?
Yes. Alex asked me to take the pictures.
Bill, I can take it for you. I can take it for you, Bill.
I'd say smile. They get the smiling eyes.
All right, now the second proclamation. Proclamation Chamber of Commerce Month, September 2020. Whereas the Ripon Area Chamber of Commerce has been a business leader in the community for over 40 years, and whereas the Ripon Area Chamber of Commerce provides a wide variety of services to the members, including advocacy and economic development, and whereas the Ripon Area Chamber of Commerce also enriches the community through a wide variety of community events, and whereas the Ripon Area Chamber of Commerce also works to solve economic challenges, including labor shortages, and to encourage entrepreneurship. And whereas the Ripon Area Chamber of Commerce is a critical community partner and solves problems with the unique ability to work with stakeholders from both the private and public sectors. And whereas the Ripon Area Chamber of Commerce works hard each and every day to make our community a better place to live, work, and play. Now, therefore, I Theodore Grant, Mayor of Ripon, Wisconsin, do hereby proclaim September as Chamber of Commerce Month in the city of Ripon, and commend this observation to all our citizens. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Ripon, Wisconsin, to be affixed this 28th day of September 2020. If there is a, anyone from the Ripon Area Chamber of Commerce that would like to make any comments, I'll invite you forward now.
Hello, on behalf of Jason Mansmith, our director, who could not be here this evening, I just want to say thank you for the continued support of the Ripon Chamber of Commerce. We really appreciate the collaboration that we get with the city, so thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shay. I'll make a motion to approve the proclamation.
Second. Moved by Howard and seconded by Ben. Any discussion on this item?
Again, let's just state out loud how incredible the chamber has been. I think all of us think this, but I think it's good to state out loud that our community is made better by what the chamber does for our community.
Other comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving, designating the month of September 2020 as Chamber of Commerce Month, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is approved.
Yep, don't they come up?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yes.
The official.
All right. Moving on to the discussion item of the ATV, UTV ordinance for the city of Ripon. I will start this with Ben.
So I've asked this to be brought up to the council because it was asked by one John Neva. And instead of being able to talk about this, about a topic that, coming from where I grew up at, I'm not at all familiar with it, so, and I'm not afraid to tell you about that. But who is more in tune with it is all of you who showed up here tonight who want to speak about it. So, that being said, I'd rather hear from all you.
Well, none of them signed up for public comment. So we can discuss it as a council.
Okay. So in, in talking in some part with a few people who have partook in it, young lady I work with stated that when she does get in groups with people, they have a tendency to drive to different cities and so forth and bring a little bit of business to their cities, which I think is good for the city, for the cities that they go to. I think it could open up a little bit of business and a little bit of revenue for us. I think just in thinking about it, it's. We'd have to be careful with how we pass it. Obviously, there has to be some kind of rules in place in order to keep the safety and the preservation of our city streets and our drivers that we already have on there. But I would be okay with passing something like this, but I would want to know more from more people. I'd want to know a lot more opinions on the matter, and I would hope that the next time that we do have a, if this is decided to be pushed back to another forum, I would hope that a lot more people would want to talk about it, and not be afraid to share their thoughts, so.
I don't think we were aware that we needed this to sign up. I think there's several people that wanted to talk, but I don't know that we were aware that we needed to sign up to do so.
And I appreciate that, and maybe if amongst you two or three would like to speak. Again, it's here on the agenda for discussion only, so it's not an action item, and I note that there is a very simple draft of an ordinance in the packet. I've been involved in this with other communities, and if it were to move forward, we'd be looking at a lot more language than this draft, just.
There's a couple of us here that could probably help with that.
Right, exactly, and we appreciate that. If the council wants to move this topic forward, I know that it wasn't too long ago that the council decided not to move this issue forward. So it's here tonight for discussion. I think if you want to have two, three of you, give a couple of minutes, that probably makes sense since you've taken the time to come here this evening. But trust that if the council moves it. the council moves it forward, there will be another day to discuss the details and the specifics if the council decides to move the topic of ATVs in the city of Ripon forward. I do think one of the issues that's front and center, at least I've been informed and I'm not familiar, is that we're not bounded by communities that have authorized ATV, whether it's the town of Matoman, the town of Ripon. I'm not aware that we have border trails, which may or may not be relevant to discussion, but I'd make note of that, that currently we do not have that is what I've been told. I don't know that to be a fact, but that's the information I've been given. So with that, if two or three of you want to speak and kind of express why you would want the city to be interested, go ahead, with that five-minute limit in mind.
If you could, please state your name and address before you speak.
So I'm Chad Ryder. I'm from the town of Wopon. My partner here is Steve Hop, he's from the Alto, town of Alto area. So we've started a ATV club there, just getting started. So we're trying to reach out to other communities that are in the area. So as you probably know, the city of Wopon has an ordinance that's been in place for coming up on a year. Things have been going pretty well. I've got two deputies that I work with at the Dodge County Sheriff's Office that are city council members in Wopon, and they were very active in getting it passed in the city of Wopon, and then a retired nine-one-one dispatcher that I worked with for years that was, that's also in the city council, and the three of them were the three that kind of headed it up in Wopon. So you've got three people in law enforcement that were for it and were instrumental in getting it passed in Wopon. The ordinance is pretty clear. You have to be sixteen, you have to have a driver's license, you have to have insurance. If you're sixteen to eighteen, you have to be wearing a helmet, which is actually a DOT law, or, sorry, a DNR law. So there's a lot of rules that are already in place with the DNR, things like speed limits, safety equipment, and the stuff like that. The city added a few things like the driver's license, the insurance, hours of operation that are permitted in the city. So their ordinance, I think, would be a pretty good model for you because it's probably got most of the things in it that the city of Ripon would want. And as far as other communities near Ripon, Steve and I in our club are working pretty hard, and I'll let Steve talk about what townships and stuff that are coming in your direction that are kind of getting on board.
Yeah, so we've just got town Alto open. We've been putting signs up this week. We drafted an ordinance, follows the city of Wopon, follows the town of Wopon. I've been in conversation with people with the town of Matoman, they had it on the agenda a couple of months ago, and their comments from their agenda were to follow the lead of the town Alto. We're not here as outsiders, we've been invited by some local, Jeff Blackburn and others from the local community here to help explain and answer questions. Those not familiar with the ATV community have the impression that we're just out there to ramrod and rip up and down the roads. The demographic of people riding, I've been riding for, well, since 2002, so it's a long time. The demographic of people riding is our age, in their fifties. There are your ramrod kids, we have rules, you know, speed limits. Any of the ordinance that the city would adopt, your city officials, officers can enforce that ordinance. If you say you want a speed limit of twenty-five, an ATV going thirty-five is a ticket. Rules are rules, and they've got to be enforced. You know, we can't, we can't let people ramrod around. One of the things we did in the village of Alto, it's a thirty-five mile an hour speed limit. We've got the county to approve because it's county road going through, twenty-five miles an hour for ATVs. Thirty-five mile an hour ATV looks like it's racing. We slow them down to twenty-five, make it palatable for people. You have the control, and you have the right to rescind it anytime, so you can write your ordinance accordingly.
There's also, like, Village of Oakfield is on, the town of Oakfield is working towards it, Lamertine...
El Dorado.
El Dorado.
Lamertine. Nikiamai just passed.
So there's, it's moving rapidly in this direction to get the rest of these townships and hopefully some of the cities on board, too. You know, Steve and I were talking about it tonight, you know, we could have the club from up here in our club, we could ride and meet in the middle and, you know, have a picnic in the park and do things like that, so it's a good family-oriented thing. A lot of these, you know, machines hold two, four people, so people like to take their families safely, go out with, you know, safety equipment that's required by the DNR again, and go out, and most of the stuff that's concerning doesn't need to be because it's covered by the DNR. There's already a lot of laws in place for the DNR. The one thing that most of the cities and villages and townships have chosen to do is take it a step further and do, like I said, the sixteen-year-old driver's license insurance. I think insurance you have to have through DNR anyway, but the sixteen-years-old with a driver's license is one of the primary things that the ordinances have been doing. So in any event, if you have any questions for us, I'm sure we'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you.
I would just like to add that the town of Nikiamai also adopted the ordinance last week at their board meeting, so they're waiting on signage right now. So that's the Fox River ATV wheelers.
Where?
Nikiamai.
Nikiamai, thank you.
So that'll go all the way along Highway twenty-six, all the way up, like where Country USA is, so that got passed the other night, and they're just waiting on signs.
Thank you. All right, further discussion from the council?
I think I just have a question. As far as safety measures go, what is the likelihood of like an accident happening?
I am unaware of any accidents that have occurred in the city of Wopon. There, just to put it out there, because I'm sure you'll do your research, there was going to be, you're probably going to hear some talk about a couple of chases that occurred, but I want to make it clear that those chases that occurred were prior to the ordinance being put in place in the city of Wopon. There were two knuckleheads that decided to run from the police, so they were so outside any ordinance that would have been in place anyway, but it was prior to the ordinance. And I'll be honest with you, you're going to have, chief's going to have some complaints at first, people are not going to like it, you know, some people aren't going to like it, there's going to be some complaints, but what happened in the city of Wopon is Facebook lit up for three months and complaint, 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 and then people said, well, there's, none of these have been, you know, found by the police to be, you know, the people have been gone, these complaints haven't panned out, and now it's pretty much gone silent, which is what we told what happened based on what other communities see, is that right away, because it's brand new, A, you're going to have more use because people are excited about it, B, you're going to have more complaints, and then those things just kind of fade away.
In our district, we live by a beautiful park that happens to have a gravel driveway, and I had some residents, when they saw that this was going to be brought up, say that, you know, what would you recommend an ordinance to have so that people wouldn't just drive around maybe on this gravel parking lot, and I think it would be fun, right, but we don't want to, we don't want to wreck it, of course, and also by this park, you know, there's a little bit of a loop that the road could, and some residents were concerned that people would just go around the loop constantly. Are there recommendations for language that would say, I don't want to say that you can't go past a certain place, you know, so many times, or, you know, that you're traveling from a distance to a distance, you're not just going back and forth constantly?
With the city of Wopon and most other communities that do this, they say that, you know, all streets in the city of Ripon are open to ATV/UTV use except as otherwise posted. So if you didn't want them in certain areas, you just post no ATV, no UTV. As far as the, like, the gravel parking lot, again, that's going to kind of fall to the chief and his folks to watch out for, and what it comes down to is the same thing as if a kid was screwing around in there in his pickup truck. It's destruction of property, it's a citation, it's reckless driving, it's, you know, whatever, you know, the city has for that. So, you know, you see some of this stuff happen right at the beginning, and then when these kids go home to their folks with a $250 citation, it slows that down pretty quickly because the parents aren't going to tolerate that from their sixteen, seventeen-year-old kids that are living at home, and the kids that are, you know, other people that are doing it don't want to pay the money either, so it slows down pretty quick. But you can post certain areas that you don't necessarily want people operating on. So the way that the state ordinance, or the state has it set up is any road in the city of Ripon that has a speed limit of thirty-five or less is under your control. State highway, county roads, any of those that are thirty-five or less posted speed limits, you know, for cars, those fall under your domain, and you could decide what, if any restrictions you want to place on any of those streets.
You can always post signage, too, like, for instance, burning donuts in the park, and we've seen this all out of the towns and villages that we ride through. Either there's signs, stay away, this is private property, or no burning donuts, put CFC signs up, no burning donuts, you know, make people aware. We shouldn't be doing it anyhow. We shouldn't be doing it anyhow, we should be respecting property, it's a privilege. Should be treated as a privilege that can be taken away, and that's one thing we stress in townships that we've got, that we've worked with. This is a privilege. It's for us to earn it and keep it. Sign again.
One of the questions I have, as you said, there's a lot of surrounding communities that are looking at this or getting on board with this, seems to be Alto is the closest one to us at this point in time. Is your goal to be able to go from community to community? If so, are you riding on state highways? Are you riding on county roads? How are you getting from community to community?
So the town, again, like, for a township, for example, they have control of all the roads in their area that are thirty-five or under.
Mainly town roads.
So the town, they control all the township roads, regardless of speed limit, but when it comes to county roads and state highways, they only have control of them for, if they're under, if they're thirty-five or under. If they're not, and what we look for is if needed to get, say, from one town road to another town road, you know, if you have an east-to-west situation, you're coming over, you hit a county road, and then the town road jogs down here, then the, you know, the clubs or the community would seek permission from the county to allow that as a connector corridor, they call them, so that just like maybe that mile or whatever that jog is of the county road would be open, but that's 100% up to the county to determine, and the state gets even more difficult. So there's almost no state highways, at least in the southern part of Wisconsin that I know of, that are accessible out in the, you know, out in the township, out in the county. But it's primarily anything that's thirty-five or under for state and county roads. So it's, there's a whole nother step to getting those approved.
Primarily town roads. There's, um, Marquette County, Marquette County has a lot of county roads open, but Fond du Lac County is mainly town roads. We were lucky enough in the town of Alto to get three very short sections of county roads approved as connector to get from this town road to that town road.
So I guess more back to your point.
It's mainly town roads.
More back to your point of what do we seek to be able to travel from community to community?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, that's the, that's the goal of our, of the clubs, it's what the riders want, so that they can go out on a Saturday afternoon with their family and go from, you know, one village to another, one city to another, bring business, like you had mentioned, you know, come up here, have lunch at one of your restaurants, go to the gas station, get gas, and then, you know, eat and then travel back to where they came from. So, yeah, going from one community to another is the goal, sure.
Chief, you had some comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As we mentioned, we approached this topic a couple of years ago, and at that time, I think when we left that conversation, one of the issues that we were concerned about was the island that we were creating. Obviously, the, some of the communities have changed, but we're still, as City Attorney Wertz mentioned before, we're still in that island phase. Based on the fact that this was on the agenda, I did reach out to a couple of people, some things that I just want to comment on that, I did talk to the police chief in the city of Wopon. He did acknowledge the two chases that this gentleman mentioned that they had. They've also had complaints concerning noise of the vehicles and then traffic, certain traffic violations, but nothing egregious or really problematic other than the pursuits that they mentioned. Also spoke with the city of Amaro Police Chief. Again, he shared with me, and I was able to obtain a copy of their ordinance in reference to this. One of the things I will mention is that the ordinance that I think was incorporated in your packet, to me, is very much lacking. I would not even look at that ordinance. I think there's substantial changes that would need to be made on that. I think the Amaro ordinance is much more appropriate in terms of that. The other thing I want to mention is that I did have conversations with the town of Ripon, the town of Ripon Police Chief, Howard Stib, as well as the town chairman, because when we had this discussion two years ago, the same group that came and had that discussion with us also had discussions with the town of Ripon, and then that did not materialize any further than our discussion did. I think it would be appropriate, and my, my, my opinion based on that conversation with the gentleman from the town of Ripon was that they are not in favor of opening every town road up for ATV/UTV traffic as well. They are interested in designated routes, and I think that would be an important aspect of what, if this conversation goes any further, that would be an important conversation with us as well. So I would offer to you that I think it would be very important that if this moves forward, and that's entirely up to you, that there's a lot of consideration given to the conversation between the city and the township on this issue, because obviously if they move forward without our involvement, then they're going to have routes, and we're going to have routes, and it's just going to be challenging to try to get those two things to mesh up. So I think that any conversation, if this goes forward any further than tonight, needs to incorporate someone from the town of Ripon and the city of Ripon to have those discussions together to talk about where those routes are going to go once they leave the city, enter the township, to avoid conflict with either the city or the township. And I think that would be a very important aspect of that conversation. So I really would urge you that if, again, if it goes any further than, or any further than tonight, that that conversation must take place, in my opinion. Those are just some of the things that I was able to gain. I do think that the specific laws that were mentioned earlier in the ordinances, as far as you must be a certain age, you must have a valid driver's license, those definitely need to be in there. I think the other issue would be hours of operation. For instance, I know Brandon just passed theirs, and I think they're going to eight o'clock, or nine o'clock at night is their limit, so that would be an important thing to consider as well. But again, I think we just need to be careful about creating our island here with no acts. If we act on this without any conversation with our bordering neighbor, we're going to create an island again, and that's just going to lead to problems. Basically, you can drive around in the city and not go anywhere. So I think we just need to be aware of that, and we need to have that discussion should it go any further. I know the chief for the town of Ripon is here, you agree with that? Okay. So I just wanted to mention that as part of the conversation, and I'll leave the rest to you. Any questions for me before I step away?
As far as the vehicles themselves, they're not strictly, are they not?
Yeah, there's cer-
Do they have the lights, though?
Yeah, depends, and you can incorporate some of that into the ordinance. You can incorporate the need for signals, headlights... You can incorporate, um, the need for signals, headlights. Though you can, you can, uh, put on there seat belts that, for the UTVs, um, those type of things.
Sorry, chief, the state law already covers that part of it. So in a, in a UTV that has seat belts, you have to wear your seat belt even when you're riding on trails. Your seat belt use is required. Um, and then the helmet laws for, you know, up to 18 years old are in place.
They have to be licensed by the DNR?
Right. They have, they have a license plate on them. They have the stickers on them for the registration. That's all DNR regulated already. Um, the headlights and tail, uh, headlights and brake light, taillight is one that some of the cities have put in. Um, I would strongly urge you for your citizens to stay away from requiring, like, lit blinkers and stuff because, quite frankly, those get very, very costly because, to, to have those put on. But just like on a bicycle, uh, just like on a Harley-Davidson that doesn't have signals, hand signals are appropriate. And in, in the city of Wapah, they push that over and over again to the riders with warnings and stuff that they have to be using their hand signals for turns. Um, but there's a lot of other vehicles that are on the road that don't require installed blinkers because they're just not designed to have them. And that's where the, the hand signals come in. Sorry to interrupt, chief.
That's all right. You can make the, the ordinance as restrictive as you want. Um, you know, some of the other things that are on there, you know, in, in addition to the hours of our operation is, for example, in the Amro ordinance, if you have three or more violations as a driver, the city can revoke your privilege. Um, and you can't operate anymore. Um, you know, that's, you know, that's an example of something that Amro put into their ordinance, you know. So you can make it as restrictive if you want. I will tell you that I'm probably not in favor of opening every city street for this. Um, I'm more in favor of the route option if it does go any further in discussion, um, and designating those routes, um, much like we did with, uh, you know, we have access for snowmobile trails into the city at certain points, um, to lead to certain areas. Um, so that's, you know, a consideration as well. But again, that discussion, I think, needs to incorporate the township, uh, with that just to be good neighbors and to avoid conflict, any potential conflicts. Okay?
Chief, do you have, do you have access to DNR registrations and license plates and to that information?
Yes. Yep. Yeah, we're able to access the DNR database. Just like we would run a license plate on a vehicle or a driver's license, we can access the DNR base for boat registrations, snowmobile registrations, ATV registrations. Yep.
Thank you.
I think the question I have for you is if they did, let's say, is there like, uh, kind of basis on like the driver's license, maybe you can give an explanation possibly. Um, if they, let's say, got, with the driver's license, you get 12 points in a year. You know, so like after every calendar year from that first citation, you get your points back. Is it the same concept with an ATV, UTV where it's one violation and after a year it drops off? Or is that ongoing where if you get three citations, you're done?
Well, just to make sure that you understand and where we're coming from there, generally, your driver's license, if you get cited for a violation on an ATV or a UTV, does not affect your driver's license status. In turn, you could have a suspended or revoked driver's license and still operate an ATV or UTV. That's why it's important to incorporate some of that information into the prospective ordinance where you don't have people who get picked up for one, two, three, or four OWIs, can't drive a motor vehicle, but can drive the ATV, UTV. So you need to have some language if you're considering anything to put into your ordinance that says you must be this age and you must have a valid driver's license. That gets around that issue. Okay? But you could, correct me if I'm wrong, you could get picked up for, and I'm using this because it's something everybody understands, you could get picked up for drunk driving on a UTV and it will have no effect on your driver's license.
That's correct.
You could get picked up for drunk driving on a snowmobile and it has no effect on your driver's license. Okay? That's why it's important to put that stuff into your ordinance to say, if we have three violations, no matter what they are, you lose your privilege within the city of Ripon. That would be one aspect that we could put in there.
One other thing, chief, you're right about the driver's license. But just so people understand, for all of those different sports, boating, snowmobiling, and ATV, you know, second offense OWI on a ATV, you're going to jail. Third offense, you're going to jail longer. They mirror what the car license, what the car OWI is for fines, for suspensions, or for jail time and stuff like that, so.
But it doesn't affect the validity of your license.
You're correct, chief, but I just wanted to make sure that it, that people do understand that it does have very significant penalties that will hopefully, you know, get people to not do it.
How do you, how do you track that?
It's listed in the DNR. So you can run somebody's DNR, a DNR record. Yeah, so I can check somebody in, in the DNR database to see if you have a fishing license or a hunting license, and it's gonna tell me the violations that you have on your DNR record.
And you're able to write those tickets?
Yes.
The second offense would go to the state, to the DA's office? That's how you would handle it, is refer it to the state?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
But again, um, you know, those are things that we need to work out. Should this conversation go any further than that, but that's just an important thing that you need to understand in reference to that.
And, and let me just echo what the chief did, and I talked briefly with the city administrator about the topic. Um, I was involved in the Amro draft, so I know the Amro ordinance. I'm comfortable with it. So I agree with the chief. If we move forward, we're starting there. We're not starting here. Um, and the point he made regarding the town is critical. Uh, it's routes of travel in Amro. And so if there is no route of travel through the city, that is a significant issue, um, at least from the city attorney's perspective as to moving forward with this ordinance. The route of travel is the only concept that makes sense today.
And you're just asking for conflict if you don't do that. So if we say you can operate on Douglas Street, for instance, and the township says, no, you can't, you know, people are gonna run into conflict there based on that border and where it's at. And so we need to be partners. We need to be good neighbors in reference to this conversation with them. Shill it go any further. Okay?
Appreciate it.
Can I ask, does the city of Amro have only certain streets?
Yes.
Certain routes of travel.
Certain routes of travel, and then they have part of their ordinances. And, and then we see this with snowmobiles. If you want to go from your residence, you have to take the direct route to the trail access or to that route, that, that open route road.
Do those routes typically go by your businesses, by the businesses and stuff?
They, I think they did coordinate with some businesses, but I don't think it hit, I don't think it hit all of them.
Right, and they're a little different, um, they're, they're a little different, and-
Amro's because of the bridge, right? I mean, you had to incorporate roads because of the bridge.
Yeah, that's the issue. Whether Amro is the bridge, Winnicott is the bridge.
Right.
You know, so they've got those specific issues up there, so.
And one of the last comments I'll make, I promise, with the routes. I understand what the chief is saying. One of the things that we really encourage with, through the clubs and stuff, though, is to be careful how much you limit because it becomes confusing. It doesn't serve all of the people that want to be able to use the ATVs and UTVs. You know, what a lot, a lot of these communities have the, the ORV, or is it the electric vehicles, like the, their glorified golf carts, right, that people can drive around on? You know, people like us like to do that with our ATVs and UTVs. We're, we like to just take a ride and go to the store and things like that. So if you limit too much what streets you allow access on, it becomes confusing. It's gonna cost you a lot more in signage, um, because you're gonna have to post so much different stuff. That's why the city of Wapah, after discussions, they decided that they were just gonna have all the city streets be, be available so it wasn't confusing. It could end up being more difficult for the chief to try to police it because people get confused on where they can and can't ride. So just, just my two cents worth on that.
It's a legitimate argument.
And, uh, just because of the time we've spent on this topic, we can make, uh, some concise points. Jim, you had a comment?
Yeah, I was just gonna, same thing, agree with chief. I don't know if we're any closer than the last time we talked about it. Um, Mr. Morrison mentioned a coworker who traveled and did this, but she didn't go to just the city of Ripon, un-trailer, drive around town, and put it back on the trailer and leave. She would've got off, trailered to the city, drove somewhere on a trail or a route, most likely up north. And that's where we're gonna run into a lot of problems around this area is that there aren't trails. You're talking township roads. You're talking city streets. They are not designated routes. We only have one train track in and out that's actually a trail of some sort. So we need county permission even to use anything with those. Correct, what?
Correct, minimumly.
Minimum.
And, and the private railroad track.
So there'd be nothing to ourself to tie us to Brandon, Wapah, any kind of trail. It'd have to involve township route, if I'm not mistaken. I don't know of any trail that goes that way.
Right. And that, and that's what the, that's what the other cities and villi- and townships and villages are doing is they're trying to pass these to get connections from one place to the other.
And that's the key out of all of this for me, and I said it the last time we talked about it, and I'll say it again tonight, is that there is not that network. We would be that island. There is no need for us to discuss this or even think about approving this because nobody's gonna trailer here, drive around town, and put it back on their trailer.
It goes both ways. If you, if you don't make a place for them to ride to, there's no point in them opening up to connect your road to come to Ripon.
But they could connect to us. The closest one that I know of is north of Eureka, north of Atlantic.
Correct.
That's the closest township that I know of, that I'm aware of. And now the next closest would be if Brandon approved that this week. So again, you have to get to Nepieeska to get to us. So by us doing it, makes no point until Nepieeska, town of Ripon, and then us. There's two other steps before we even have to even consider this. I understand where people say, well, if the city Ripon does it, then everybody else will follow suit. But it's a mute point until those expand out. You're asking us to go here to connect the dots versus the, connect the dots through us. And I just can't get on board with that because I just don't see the need. I don't see the need for us driving four-wheelers and ATVs around town with nowhere to go. The whole point of this is up north and to the west and to the south where there are trails and networking ability. Eventually, there will be a route through town. I said it last time. I'll say it again. But right now, I'm just not seeing it. I just don't see a need.
Jim, Jolene?
Oh, I just had a quick question for chief. As far as most of the complaints I've heard were concerned about noise, and theoretically, our ordinance could have a certain decibel level you have to be under. But do we even have an ability to measure noise of a vehicle?
DNR.
But, but can you, but can we measure it? Do we literally have the capacity?
We have a noise meter, decibel meter.
For ordinance violations here, but quite honestly, that's cumbersome and it's, I mean-
To say the least.
Yeah, and, yeah, that, I'm just not sure how practical that is. It's, it's able to be done. I'm just not sure the practicality of it. But it's a good question.
You're, you're better with hours and time of day and-
Exactly, and that's-
Routes of travel.
Yeah.
To, to be able to suggest. And, and that's a concern, and I think Jim's stated it. I don't see the city of Ripon at this time having all routes of travel in the city of Ripon open to ATVs. I get the argument. I understand it. The expression of individuals that want to use those type of vehicles. But I don't see that as what's gonna happen in the city of Ripon. Um, and we did discuss this topic before, and that was not the door anybody wanted to go through at that point in time.
Howard?
Um, we've heard from people outside the town. Is there anybody in the audience from the city of Ripon that would like to see that, this, that is willing to come up and speak as a citizen of the city of Ripon and why you wanna do it? State your name and address.
Please keep it brief.
My name's Eric Cremino. I live at, uh, 1036 Thomas Street. Um, I don't have an ATV or UTV, and I don't see a problem with it. Um, I work in Markazan. I spend all day in Markazan. Markazan's past something. I'm on the streets of those ATVs, UTV golf courts, golf carts all day long, and I don't have a problem with them. And I know people keep bringing up the noise thing. The noise that those make isn't anywhere as close to the noise that the semis, the Harleys, and that God forsaken train make coming in and out of this town. So I think the noise thing is really a non-issue as much as some people want to make it an issue. Come over to my house on a Sunday, listen to the Harleys all day long. So, that's my point.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone on the council have a motion to move this along or to table this item as we've spent about 45 minutes on it now?
A gentleman in the other city of Ripon.
After his comment.
Just in fairness to the-
Hang on, state your name, please.
My name's Jeff Blackburn. I live at 553 Hall Street. Uh, I've been an avid ATV rider since the mid 80s. And, uh, it's a good way to bring families together. Like Steve and I were talking, you can't put your three-year-old kid or four-year-old kid on a motorcycle and, uh, take them for a ride. But UTVs allow families to get together, go to McDonald's, get ice cream, go to a house or whatever. And, uh, even if it was only inner-city travel for right now, it would still enable us residents to mingle around with each other and do things that we normally wouldn't do and probably just stay home at night and not do anything. So someone like me, I have no desire for motorcycles, don't care for them. Motorcycle riders say the same thing about us with ATVs. So it's just a matter of opinion and what you like and grew up with. So, that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Any motions on this topic, or should we just, uh, leave it here for the night?
You guys are okay with that? I'd like to table it for the time being so I can do a little bit more research with the surrounding cities and see what kind of ordinances everybody has in place. See if I can come up with something and, uh-
As a discussion item, do we need a motion to table or just?
I think we can just end discussion. That's a, that's a good comment, Ben. Kind of puts it out there to the public that you want to do more work before you ask. And nothing rejects you from bringing it back for discussion, and then you, from there, would move.
If I could say one thing?
Action.
Or you can make a motion to table if that's what he wants to do.
Everybody who spoke here tonight, thanks you very much for showing up and speaking. I'd like to see you guys afterwards so I can discuss a little bit more with you. So. I'll motion table it.
Okay, made the motion, and I'll let that move forward.
Is there a second on the motion to table?
I'll second it.
We moved a second to the table, the discussion on ATVs. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is tabled. We'll bring it up at a future time. All right, uh, moving back to the regular order, uh, we have a presentation of the 2019 financial audit. Uh, have, uh, Amber Drewski, I believe I pronounced that right. Uh, thank you for your patience, and she has a presentation for us.
So my name's Amber Drewski. I'm with Clifton Larson Allen, formerly Schenck. Uh, we do the city's audit. So you should have already received a bound document and a stapled document. I'm gonna, the bound document has a lot of information in it, so I'm gonna stick to the stapled document, keep it short for you guys. Um, on starting on page one, talks about that we audited the financial statements of the governmental activities, business-type activities, aggregate discreetly presented component units, major fund, major funds, and the aggregate remaining information for the city of Ripon as of and for the year ended December 31st, 2019. Uh, what that means is we took the city's financial information. We, on a test basis, uh, we issue an opinion, which you can find on pages one to three of the bound document. And in that opinion, you'll see that we issued an unmodified or what we call clean opinion. Uh, and that is, again, based off of test transactions. We do not look at all transactions. Uh, we do some sampling and risk-based approach. Uh, and in, in conjunction with that, we also give a, um, there's a letter provided at the back on the internal controls of the city. We do not express an opinion on the internal controls, but we do review them. And we do provide suggestions, um, based off of our, our discussions, our testing, and so forth. And all of that is done in accordance with US government accounting principles and under government auditing standards. Going down a little bit mid-page, on the page one of the stapled document, accounting policies, you can find all of the primary city accounting, financial policies in note one to the financial statements. There was one change in the financials if you would compare current year to prior year last year, and that is the implementation of GASB statement 84, which deals with fiduciary activities that the city acts, uh, on behalf of other, uh, other entities. Bottom of page one, accounting estimates. Within the document, there are a few estimates that are included in your financial records, one being the depreciable life of your capital assets, your fair value- One being the depreciable life of your capital assets, your fair value of your investments, accumulated sick leave, allowances for uncollectible accounts, which is primarily the EMS receivables, uh, the net pension liability, which is in relation to the Wisconsin retirement system and the city's proportionate share, and the other post-employment benefits, which is the city's proportionate share in the Wisconsin life insurance program through the WRS. Um, the other items on page two, no disagreements with management and no difficulties, uh, performing the audit. Uh, great team to work with and always enjoy coming, so. I'm gonna skip to page four. Page four is a summary of your governmental fund balances. Primarily, uh, gonna focus on the general fund, which is the top portion of that page. Your long-term advances, the non-spendable portion, increased primarily due to TID seven, tax incremental district number seven. That has some advances from the general fund. So that was the primary increase from six-hundred-and-eighty-nine thousand, or to six-hundred-and-eighty-nine thousand from three-hundred-and-sixty-three thousand. The unassigned fund balance in the general fund is a little over a million dollars compared to one-point-four million in the prior year. Um, on page five, there is a graph that will show the breakdown of the general fund fund balance, and it'll show you that you are right within your policy of twenty percent, and that is, uh, the second graph there. Um, the only other thing I wanna draw attention to is the capital projects at the bottom of page four. These are all of the fund balances of your tax incremental districts. Some of that is due to, um, that'll be timing of debt payments, uh, infrastructure, uh, tax increments, and that will fluctuate and can fluctuate significantly year to year depending on the activity that happens. On page five, again, like I mentioned, these are the graphs of the general fund, and it'll show you the breakdown between non-spendable, assigned, and unassigned. The unassigned, your policy is the twenty percent of general fund's operating revenues. That's right in line with where we expect, uh, generally cities your size to be at. We want you to be, um, usually we say twenty to twenty-five percent, depending on your cash flow and timing of your state aids, property taxes, and so forth. Because that unassigned is kind of your rainy day. On the bottom of page five, though, I will mention that over the last five years, that has been decreasing. So you wanna make sure as you pay, as you adopt your budget, uh, year over year, that you kinda monitor that so that you're not dipping into that and going below. Any questions on that or on the governmental fund balances? Then I'm gonna go to page six and page seven. These talk about the water utility and the wastewater utility. Primary items are the change in net position for the water utility was a positive fifty-seven thousand. Your rate of return was just under two percent. You are authorized for a five percent rate of return by the PSC. Typically, that's a little lower than what you've been at, uh, and some of that's been, was some increased operation and maintenance costs in 2019. So, um, obviously, you just wanna continue to monitor kind of where that rate of return falls and make sure that you're consistent with what you're authorized for. On page seven, this gives a breakdown of the net position for the water utility. Uh, you can see most of the net position is in the net investment in capital assets. Obviously, that's your infrastructure, uh, for the pipes and so forth. Your unrestricted, which is kind of your rainy day for the water utility, is fairly, fairly consistent with prior years. The wastewater utility had a change in net position of a deficit of forty-seven thousand, which was much better than the 2018 of a hundred-and-forty-thousand-dollar deficit. And page eight has a breakdown of that net position. That unrestricted dipped down a little bit, but some of that is due to some capital expenditures that obviously increased the net investment in capital assets. Any questions on any of that?
We had a large change in depreciation on that water utility. Was it a certain one thing or is it just because of the age of our infrastructure?
A lot of that'll have to do with the age and, uh, and also bringing in new, um, obviously, as you add new infrastructure, you're gonna take a bigger. Again, also the same thing with the wastewater utility is to, to monitor that, uh, I like to say your cash flows, your cash flows from operations, are you covering your capital expenditures? Are you covering your debt? And, and if you're not, then that's the time where you wanna look at a, at a rate increase at that point. Any other questions? Otherwise, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Questions or comments on that topic before moving on? Hearing none, we'll move on to the consent calendar. Is there a motion to approve the calendar as published?
Motion to approve.
Seconded. Moved by John, seconded by Ben. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of approving the consent calendar as published, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent calendar is approved. Next item is the contract with MSA Professional Services. Lori, do you wanna start this one?
Uh, yeah, we do have Dave Rasmussen from MSA here to walk us through the, the grant administration contract.
Okay, thank you very much, and, uh, congratulations on being awarded a one-million-dollar community development block grant, uh, for public facilities. This project is for Vermont Street and Parkway Terrace Water Sewer and Street Infrastructure Improvement. Uh, this started probably last year, and I wanna thank Lori, Mike, Ann, and Ann for all their work in putting the application together. The application was submitted in July, and in August, we received notification that the award had been funded. With the award is, um, of course, with federal funding, there's always some strings attached with that. So, uh, we have put together a contract for the administration of the CDPG grant. It covers the grant agreements, it covers wage rate monitoring, which is the biggest factor in doing this, uh, in the administration of a CDPG grant. What we have to do with wage rate monitoring is we make sure that once the contractor starts, uh, that they're paying, paying this bacon wage rates, that they submit weekly payrolls to us so that we can monitor and make sure that those things are paid. It also, uh, has the financial, um, compliance, uh, part of the contract, which is drawing down the funds. And as a contractor submits a pay application, we draw down funds to help pay for that. Then it covers the environmental review, it covers the closeout and all the reporting. There's four reports that have to be done each year, uh, two reports every six months that we have to do. So that's all included in, in the administration contract. The, the other parts of this contract is applications for the safe drinking water and the clean water fund. As I said, this is a two-point-two-million-dollar project. You receive one million dollars from the Department of Administration for, through the CDPG grant. So that leaves a balance of one-point-two million dollars. We are looking at applying for safe drinking water loan program and the clean water loan program through the DNR Environmental Improvement Fund. Those, uh, those are loans, uh, but they're currently, the interest rate on those loans are about one-point-six-five percent. Uh, they're twenty years fixed. These applications, uh, the, the safe drinking water loan application would go in next June because as part of the application, you have to have plans and checks. Uh, the clean water fund application would go in in next September. Uh, but thi- this program is, you're allowed to reimburse yourselves, uh, for those costs. So we're looking at, uh, construction on the Vermont, uh, Vermont Street and Parkway Terrace beginning by July first. It has to start by July first of next year. Okay, and then you have a two-year construction period, basically. Construction has to be completed by October thirty-first of 2022. Any questions or comments, or?
Move to approve the contract as presented?
Seconded. Has been moved by Al, seconded by Jim. Any discussion on approving the contract? Hearing no discussion on approving the contract, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That contract is opposed.
Thank you.
Approved. All right, next item is the procurement policy. Lori?
There is a procurement policy in your packet, it's a one-page policy. This is a requirement for the grant, um, documentation, the, uh, we don't have an existing policy, so we need to adopt one.
Move to approve.
Seconded. Has been moved by Al, seconded by Jim. Discussion on this topic.
Just that the reason for some of these things is because of the grant. With, with the grant, there are very specific things that need to be done. And to Dave's point, timelines, periods, uh, dots, crosses, T's are very specific when it comes to these grants. So that's why we're doing some of the things we're doing tonight.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the procurement policy, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. Next item is design and construction contract with MSA Professional Services.
That'd be me, um, I'm Dan Romer with MSA. Um, so, going right back to Dave's point, um, you got the money, the grant, and then with the Vermont and Parkway Terrace construction, I'm not, I'm obviously not presenting the, the contract for that. I guess I'll kinda point you to the back, it's only fifty-three pages, if you wanna read it all, be my guest, but I tried to summarize most of it because it's a lot of legal jargon. So if you go kinda towards the very back of the contract, um, it's about two, three pages from the back, it's exhibit J. Actually starts on page two, but in the top right corner, it'll say exhibit J. Um, and this is basically, uh, just a document that I put together to briefly summarize what we're gonna do. And you guys may have seen something similar to this before, um, I know we did the project this year. But essentially, we go out there, we gather all the existing site information, uh, bring it back, do the utility design between the water, the sewer, the road, stormwater, um, all that kinda stuff. I make it sound really easy when I say it like that and way too fast, but, um, there, there is a lot involved in it. And then obviously, we create the, the plans and specs. We coordinate with, uh, other utilities out there, so the power company, the, um, TV, gas, anybody else out there. Put together specifications for the contractor to follow, um, and then we do the permitting. And then I have meetings, uh, I, I'll personally be attending meetings with village, our city staff, as far as making, starting with a kickoff meeting, then a preliminary, preliminary plan review, which is basically where I bring it to Mike and Chris, um, for their comments. Then we do a final plan review, and then typically, in this contract, I have a public information meeting, so that'd be having the public come here, making sure their voice is heard, uh, their concerns are taken care of. Cause nobody knows those streets better than obviously the people who are driving them and using them and whatnot. Then from there, we go to the bidding phase. We do, again, we provide all the documentation for it. And then, this one also includes construction. This was kinda the conversation that I've had with Mike, as this project is, uh, a little bit more involved. It's, as Dave stated, closer to, we're looking at two-point-two million dollars. And, and previous projects, some of this stuff may not have been included. But essentially, what, what the construction administration phase includes is, um, you know, my time to work with the contractor, having meetings, uh, making sure everything's staying on schedule, communicating with the contractor, uh, making sure that they're putting in the right, um, products, uh, that we specify. Meetings, making sure that their payment is, is correct, or that they're not, uh, asking for more than they deserve, and, and basically kinda checking on things. And then construction staking, so we go out there and basically lay it out for them. And then the last part is, uh, construction observation. So that would be for an MSA representative, um, who's familiar with basically water sewer roadway construction, to be out there watching the work, uh, basically the entire time that the project's going on. So that, uh, either city staff aren't tied up with it, or, uh, you know, it, it, it really helps. Basically, what that person is doing is communicating between the contractor, the residents, myself, and the city. So it's just, uh, somebody who's out there all the time because contractors wanna be out there to do the work, but they don't always wanna talk to everybody that's running around or doing other things. And then, item number six here, post-construction, is basically we give you, okay, this was the plan, um, but things get changed in the field. So we give you record drawings of how it was actually built. And then we make sure there's a correction period with all of our projects, for the most part, of one year. So that if there's anything, any faulty, anything that happens, um, the contractor's responsible, and we basically come out and do a walkthrough with the city and the contractor, make sure things are what they should be. So, I guess with that being said, our schedule, um, as Dave stated, it has to be started by July of 2021. So, our schedule is, is pretty quick here. Obviously, we're here in September, we're looking at, obviously, approval, hopefully for approval for today. Um, and I have work starting on, uh, next week. So we're, we're ready to go. And then preliminary plans in December and bidding in March, then award in April. And then it's gonna be, for a two-point-two-million-dollar job, it's gonna be about construction all summer. So we're looking at probably starting in May sometime and going through September, October-ish, um, somewhere in there. That's, that, that construction schedule is, is flexible, that's on the contractor, we basically put in the dates or dates that the city wants to start by, but this is kind of just a preliminary schedule that I foresee happening. If there's dates where we have to, this area has to be done by whatever, uh, end of September, we put that in there and say the contractor has to be done. So. Anyways, um, I'm sure the part that you guys all wanna hear, and then this one's a little bit harder to find, I apologize for this. This is in, uh, exhibit C, it's kinda towards the middle of the packet. So this is the compensation portion of it. So there's, there's, I guess, two different ways that we're, I'm presenting this is, one is a, a lump sum price, um, and that includes all the design phases, the bidding phase, the construction administration, and the post-construction as a lump sum price. So, that, and then, so that's for a hundred-and-eighty-seven-thousand-four-hundred dollars. And then the other part of it is an hourly, uh, rate, which is the construction observation. So if we get to a point where, um, say you guys decide that you want us out there for the water and sewer construction or something like that, and then it's like, well, maybe we only need you out here part-time. So that's why we do it hourly, so that there is a little bit of flexibility for you guys and for us. And that is $72,500. So, I guess, the, the total that I'm presenting, and that's not anywhere in a very obvious spot in the way this contract is written, and I hate it, but I have to use this contract. So, the total is $259,900. And again, that's an, part of it in a lump sum, part of it in an hourly. And the grants do, do help pay for this, correct, Dave? So, it's part of the, the loans and the grants do pay for some of the engineering. So, I guess, I'll open it up to you guys. I probably went pretty quick, but if you guys have questions, feel free to ask.
Yeah, one of the questions I have, just working with MSA on a, on a major project in that, you had down for your estimated services for 100 days of construction?
Correct.
Eight to 10 hours a day, having someone on-site. That would range that 150 to 238 an hour individual? How do you determine that slide on that scale?
Uh, so, I mean, that, that's just-
Just because I know a couple of times, our man on the job, we were billed for, and then we would also be billed for an additional fee from the home office, or something.
No, no, and so, this typically, I, I mean, I already know the person that I would, I would like to have out here. And they're gonna be, as far as the engineer goes, they're probably gonna be, they're, they're younger, but he's been out on construction a lot. And, and that's, that's a discussion that can be had. Is it somebody, does the city want somebody like myself, who has probably middle-of-the-line bill rate? Or you can have, I mean, we could put an intern out here, but you're also not gonna get the same quality, you know? So, I, I guess, to answer your question, my plan right now is to have somebody who has a couple years of experience out here that I, you know, I trust personally. And it, it, there, there's not a set rate. It's not like I'm gonna say, oh, we can, we can do the high range of this, but... So, I guess, it's, there's no set number as of right now. That's something that is, that can be discussed if we, and that's honestly something that can rely on the contractor. You get a really good contractor, you know, you, you trust them, you've worked with them before. You may not need as much. You get a contractor who may not be as well-known, then, then, you know, you're, you're out there more often, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Same lines with the 100 days. The 100 days, does that come backwards into it, seeing the scope and the 1,600 lineal feet and all that? Is that where the 100 days came from?
Yes, so that comes from, basically, what I do is, I look at how long the road is, what are we doing, water, sewer? So, actually, DOT has some numbers out there that says they can grade 400 feet of road in a day. So that's kind of how I, I figure out the extent of the project. And then I go into the spreadsheet and kind of work my way backwards into it. So, 100 days, that honestly, and, and that's 100, not 100, oh, it is 100 calendar days, but if you think of 100 days as far as, you know, weeks or whatever, only five days a week. So it, it's actually a lot more than the 100 days, but... So it is calculated based on the work that is to be completed.
You, you talked about post-construction, there's a correction period. And you said for the most part, it's up to a year, and, but it's not stated that it's up to a year. Is that something that should be included?
Uh, that's, so that's typically something we put in the specifications, which is, one year is standard. We can, we can obviously put that one-year warranty period in there. I thought I had it in there, but I-
Or I didn't see it. I'm just looking at where it says correction period.
No, that's, no, that's, that's, you're correct. So, one month prior, so usually at 11 months after the con, after the project is complete, that's when that happens. A one-year correction period is standard for almost all construction. Honestly, every construction project I've worked on has been a one-year. But we can, we can absolutely add that language in there if you want to. The, the issue is, is if you start extending the correction period, contractors are gonna charge you more for that, because they're reliable for longer. So, a one-year is just, honestly, the, the, the part that I see the most is concrete, obviously, because that's, concrete and, and paving, asphalt paving are the two things that always come up in the, in that correction period, because that's what everybody sees. But like I said, one-year is very, very common. And I, I guess I have no problem saying adding, adding that one-year note in there, if, if that's what the city wants to see, or the board, or the council wants to see.
Well, I guess, being new, I will just say that it seems like if that protects us better, then I would advocate to add that. If that is not something that does protect us, then obviously, I would not. And then, is this also the point, I mean, I feel as though, you mentioned you would be working with Mike and Chris, and I don't know if Chris is here tonight, but at what point do we, I mean, Mike, do we say that, do you feel comfortable with this? You know, is this, is this appropriate to ask, being that you would be working closely together?
Yeah, I mean, Mike, Mike and I worked on the project this past summer together. And we, I mean, we, I guess that's, that's for you to say if you're comfortable or not, but-
I think it's important to ask perhaps, so be-
As far as the one-year, you're gonna find anything out in one year. It's gonna run through a cycle of freezing and thawing and everything, so I would feel comfortable with that. Where you would run into problems maybe is, is if the base isn't created, and you start to see some caging. But typically, I don't even know, contact track the specs.
Right, and that's, and again, that comes back to, you know, an MSA representative being out there on-site. That's our job to watch things like that. They're not putting something that's basically, you know, water, you know, really wet, or something like that, you know? And that's, that's the, that's the benefit of having that person out on construction all the time.
Questions? Hearing no other discussions. Is there a motion for this contract?
Motion to approve the design and construction contract with MSA Professional Services for the Vermont Street and Parkway Terrace reconstruction project.
Seconded. By Jim, seconded by Ben. Any further discussion on this topic?
Thank you.
Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor of approving the design and construction contract with MSA Professional Services for the Vermont Street and Parkway Terrace reconstruction project, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is approved. Next item is the ordinance adopting the City of Ripon Comprehensive Plan for 2020 through 2024. This was brought to the Plan Commission and was approved at that meeting, and is coming here for final approval. Is there a motion to approve this ordinance?
Motion to approve.
Second. Has been moved by John, and seconded by, is that Dave?
Yes.
Seconded by Dave. Any discussion on this item? Hearing no discussion. All those in favor of approving the ordinance adopting the City of Ripon Comprehensive Plan for 2020 through 2040, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is approved. Next item is the Horner Park discussion. Start, Howard, if you'd like to start this one?
Sure. Our committee met regarding this, and discussed that we would like to proceed ahead with this project. Doesn't look like it would happen this fall, it'd probably be more next spring, using city work or labor. After speaking to a few other people, one of the things we'd like to do is go back to our original plan, eliminating the roadway all the way up to the bridge and going to a six-foot wide asphalt path to detour any possible vehicular traffic up that way. Because, to be quite honest, we have no clue when we may ever come up with enough money. You know, we're talking over $300,000 to redo this bridge. And the way our budget sits right now, and the way grants and that are out there, I don't see it happening within five to 10 years, to be honest. So why not just move ahead and go in this direction to make it a, a park, complete park?
Take the street out completely.
Take out the, the asphalt of the street, and just leave a six-foot wide asphalt strip down, which was the original plan that we had brought to council.
Question for you, Lud. If we leave the six-foot asphalt, is it still technically legally a street?
If we narrow it, right. It'd be narrowing a street. So if we move forward, I will check on that and make sure we have the correct resolution.
Six foot or 10-foot hard?
I, we suggested six foot, because then vehicular traffic, you know, eight foot is a, is the width of a parking stall, so that's the width, the width of a, a smaller road. So this way, we would deter, you know, pedestrians walking can easily pass each other on a six-foot. Same with a couple of bicycles.
Just curious, because this was from March, was 10-foot, that's why I asked.
Yeah.
So, just wanted to make sure.
John?
I agree with Howie. We should just move forward with this, take out all that asphalt that's there, except for six-foot bike path or walking path. But I would like to ask Mike if we can get something started this fall yet, with the boulders or ripping up the asphalt. Possibly, it could go on the schedule. I just, I want this to proceed. People are saying, why is it going along?
You know, we will look at that, John, but with leaf pickup coming up, and we have people on vacation, it's gonna be difficult to, to accomplish that much at all this year. But we'll see where we can, if we can do anything. Once we do take this and make that change, we will have to take that out of our Whistler program or road rating program. That'll, that section won't be a road anymore into our funding that we get for our road ratings or, or whatever, however that comes about for that. So I'll just have to pull that out of there. It's only a little piece, so.
I have a question then, on that, not knowing the logistics of that. So if you were to leave the asphalt there, are you saying that you could move, that you're eligible for more funding?
No. It really needs to come out anyways, because we're not utilizing that as a road. So I really do need to take that out anyways.
Just to clarify, we are, we are going with boulders versus the concrete.
Which, which one were you, the?
Yeah, the last one was voted on, put boulders in instead of the bollards.
Right.
Exactly.
Okay.
The only thing that we would like to do is to continue where the end of the parking spots are, put down the, the heavy rubber plastic yellow stops.
Tire stop, sure.
So that there's a visible aspect of that. Because that area isn't lit real well down through there, as you know, and they are not that expensive to... We'd only need four of them. And then, continue with boulders where Mike would, he would see fit.
I'll recirculate it back and make sure we're in the project.
We need to bring it back anyways, to narrow the street.
Just remind me, so I thought the rocks were put, we were talking about putting the rocks there so people know not to drive through. And if we were to leave the asphalt, we're saying that that's, why would that be not good for this project?
Leaving the asphalt? Well, where you have the boulders, people can drive around. We've had damage to our parks with vehicles, with people driving around, things that we've, we've had set and that before, so... Taking it out, it's not gonna hurt anything. Like I say, it's not a usable street at this point in time. Don't see it for the-
It does cost money though, correct?
To take it out?
Yeah.
Labor.
Versus, I mean, if we, I mean, it'll still be flat, so if someone wanted to drive around it, they still could.
They possibly could. Depends how we set it up, how close it is to the creek drop-off and that. The main thing is, you know, it, it's a park. You know, it's not gonna be used as a throwaway. You know, why not make it look like a park, look presentable to the people that live in the neighborhood there? People that come through there.
So you're gonna leave it wide by the park, by the two, by the cars?
What's that?
You're leaving it wide?
Yeah, where the cars would park. It would be the width of the road.
Okay, and then the, the walkway's gonna be between the two cars?
Correct. Well, that would actually be marked out as a pedestrian or bike pad pathway through there, so cars cannot park on that. And that would connect with the six-foot wide.
But that, it'll be six feet all the way to the bridge.
Right. That's what we're, we're proposing from a parking rec. The next question would be, Mike, if you wanna, you and I get together, sit down, come up with a hardcore plan to bring back to council, so that we can either get an approval or rejection and move forward with this project, or not at all. And Lud, you will-
Now we're narrowing the street. Resolution.
Any further discussion on this item tonight? Done. We will move on and talk about this at a future meeting. Hopefully some final plans. Alright, next item is political signs. Paige, do you want to start the discussion?
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to make sure that we were acknowledging this, so that we're all aware of, of what, you know, with an election coming up, and with signs being everywhere. Just that we're aware of what, what the city ordinances are involving that, so.
Lud, did you wanna?
I guess Laurie kind of looked at it first, I'll let Laurie start.
There is a copy of the ordinance in there.
Yes, thank you.
Very simple, basically 45 days prior to the election, they have to be down three days after the election. There are no requirements as far as size, or...
Okay.
Pretty basic.
It's an area that the city's careful not to-
Yes.
Try to limit or try to dictate to people, obviously. There's some common sense involved, but anytime you deal with political signs, you need to allow that freedom, and essentially, that's what our current sign ordinance says. It allows those to be permitted for those periods of time. And doesn't specify size or how many.
Right.
We just haven't entered into that. Other communities, I'm sure, have some ordinances, so we could go further, but at current, we don't.
In Chapter 12 of the state legislature, also statutes, brings up the fact that we can't do certain things.
Yeah, right, there are gonna be limitations of what you can do.
Only if it interferes with public right-of-way, public safety.
Right, right.
Things like that. And if they're over 11 square feet, there's specific language in the state legislation.
And then our ordinance does address the, cannot put it in the right-of-way, so.
Yep.
I just know there were some people that were concerned that there were signs being put up prior to 45 days.
That one we could have enforced, there were some signs.
Right, yeah.
But then there was the-
No, but I just wanted to make sure that-
There was the primary, and it would have been tricky.
Yep.
Period of time, the city administrator and I talked about there'd be a window, and then you had to put them back up. It became a little-
I just wanted to make sure that it was-
Yep, being followed.
Brought up.
Yep.
One thing for the public to know is, you cannot put them between the sidewalk and the street.
Right.
Okay.
That is the city right-of-way. So it has to be on the house side of the sidewalk.
I'm glad you bring that up, because I think in the city, I've seen a number of places where it is in that location. And can you say out loud again, what is that area referred to as specifically?
Right-of-way.
So it, yep, so when we say right-of-way, I just want to point out, because I have seen that frequently in the city right now.
Technically, we should inform the house owner that it's removed back.
If you see that, you can bring that to the attention of my office or the police department.
I'm hesitant to bring this up, because I don't know if I want to open a can of worms, but when it says political signs or posters, where, how is that defined? And if someone, for example, has a sign in their yard supporting local farmers, is that, could someone say that that is political? What, how is, what, or what does this apply? Does anything here for signage apply to signs that state support our local food pantry, for example?
I think during- I think during the election season, we liberally construe that. So if someone wants to say, I support farmers, you know, that's a sign that, in my estimation, could be construed to be political in nature. So signage during this period of time, fairly open-ended, that's the way I would read it. You'd have to be very, you can, I mean, you can look at it case by case and say, there's no political message whatsoever there. But support your farmers certainly could be a political message.
So just to be clear, if someone had, I support police.
Yep, same thing.
Where, are we saying that this needs to fall within this three days after election, even though that?
Yep, signage, it's got to have some political connotation. And election season is when you really look away, if you will. Because there are messages all over the place being sent by individuals. If what you're saying, year-round, they have a sign out for other purposes, that's something we could take a look at. On a case-by-case basis.
If I read the ordinance properly, if it's a year-round sign, if it's not dealing with construction, it has to be permitted, correct?
Correct.
Correct, so this is exception.
For real estate and constructionists.
Exactly. So if there's a sign that's outside of the election period, we look at it case by case.
And someone, we need to report that. So if someone, again, has something, I support the police, I support teachers, I support my student at school, you know, Tiger Pride, we're saying that, under what we have now, that that could be reported? And that they'd have to argue that it's not political?
This is only referring to signs that require a permit, Lud.
Right.
There's other.
You can have that sign, you get a permit for it.
We have temporary sign ordinance as well that allows up to thirty calendar days for advertising such as donuts for three for ninety-nine cents, come to the bank and buy this, or whatever.
Yep.
Correct? There's actually others besides this statute. This is only that ones that require a permit, correct?
Temporary thirty or sixty days? Thirty, okay.
Just like we had the, this past spring, there were signs up in people's yards of seniors who were graduating from the class of two thousand because of the COVID situation. Those were up, and I know a lot of those were up for more than thirty days, but those are exceptional type things that you just turn and look the other way.
Well, I want to make sure of that. I mean, are we saying right now that that could be enforceable? Is that what we're saying, that our local supportive of our students or supportive of police or, again, anything? Is that, I just want to be clear for everyone listening, what are we saying?
Again, what we're discussing are signs that are exempt, okay? If you have a sign that you're placing out that does not have a political message related some way to the campaign, if you can't find it on the exempt, technically, it requires a permit. I think it's safe to say there's going to be some exceptions, and I'm sure that the code enforcement officer and the chief would tell you, we don't go looking for them. If we get a complaint, we look at it, we decide whether or not it fits under the ordinance as exempt. If not, then we'll probably address it on a case-by-case basis to say, you need to get a permit for that.
Any other discussion on this topic? Hearing done, we will move on to the last discussion item. The COVID policy. Bringing that back due to high numbers in the area. Does anyone want to start discussion on this? I will say, the copies that were put on your tables this evening, the only changes there from what you received in the packet is Section 10. The individual departments got back to us this morning with the last updates there, so that section is different from what was in your packet. It's a short section though. That's referring to the office closures. Jim?
You know, obviously, things have been changing over the last five, six months. So this has been a constantly evolving document and policy because obviously things change weekly, daily, monthly. I did notice, obviously, the biggest part of this was Number 11.
Yes.
Being added, obviously. I questioned some of the verbiage in Number 11, I questioned Number 11 in its entirety. The other question I have is in regards to travel. There's specific language in here that talks about travel, and I understand at the beginning of this, where we were in a lower incident state, and there were states close to us that were higher as far as COVID levels, so we were trying to limit those hotspot states and travel to those. But now, I don't see what the definition of travel is. What, where, what's considered travel? If I go to Amro, am I traveling? Am I? I had an employee ask me about that, is that they wanted to go to Waupaka to visit grandchildren. Is that considered travel? I guess there's no definition to what travel really means. So I guess where we're at. I understand at the beginning why we did that to the hotspot states and things like that, but now I question where travel is, whether we're talking out of state, out of country. But then again, if Wisconsin's the hotspot state, what's, what's the point? Like, I question that, and some of the verbiage I just questioned.
With the travel, most of that is, or in fact, all of it is. Find the wording there. It's basically a recommendation. It's not anything written in stone, it's just a recommendation. It's highly recommended is the wording.
But if you voluntarily, according to Section 8, Part D, if you choose to travel, you will be subject to a ten-to-fourteen day quarantine period. So the word "subject to," is that then required? Because I would interpret that as saying you're requiring it.
Where are you looking? 8B?
8D as in dog.
8 as in dog.
Sorry, look.
No, that's, that's okay, let me look. Yeah, clarification there would probably be a good thing. I agree with you.
Yep. So trying to define what would be unreasonable travel is what isn't in here.
It's all subjective to the individual.
I think the mayor hits on it, strongly recommend employees postpone or cancel personal non-essential travel, but doesn't say you can't, and does direct you to your supervisor. And so once you notify your supervisor, I think there's going to be some discussion on, is that a hotspot or not a hotspot? I'm still going to go, it's a problem. Those kind of things are left open. So you make a good point, how far do you go down the road of trying to define what's going to be a non-essential travel that is strongly discouraged? That's the question mark. You make a, make a very good point, it's kind of strongly recommended. You communicate when you know you're going somewhere that might be an issue. You're getting outside your circle, you're getting out of that box. You take it to your supervisor, and I think there's a discussion to decide whether or not it's a reasonable travel or an unreasonable travel, given the circumstances. I mean, we can come up with hypothetical that Chicago, Illinois has the highest rate imaginable. I want to travel to Chicago. Well, if you travel to Chicago, then understand there is a major problem in Chicago. And I think your point's well taken, that Wisconsin already has numbers that are up there with everybody. So it's a difficult thing to define.
The other thing that the employee mentioned was the word voluntary versus required. So a family member passes away, they're required to go take care of something. In a sense, it's required, it's not voluntary. They're required to go do this. So them coming back isn't any more or less likely to spread a disease than somebody that voluntarily drives down the road. So their question was, is somebody that voluntarily does this because they want to go to Disney World? They have to quarantine, but I, then they wouldn't have to then because I had to go? Or I was requested by family? I mean, it, it puts us in a world there, I have a feeling of picking and choosing and favorites and really maybe violating labor law of what we're doing.
Travel shall be limited to essential purposes, certainly one can argue that's an essential purpose.
Correct.
You know, so I think there's enough play in the language. I think the supervisor-driven question is important. And again, if you try to define every.
Correct, you're never going to.
You're never going to be able to do it. It's changing daily. So, you know, you either strike it completely, or you recognize that it may apply in certain circumstances.
Point C under Section 8 essentially could be enough wording that you could eliminate Point D altogether.
I don't think you can mandate A. If we're advising, you can't man, if this is advisory, we're strongly suggesting, we're urging, those type of things. We're not mandating it. So if we're not mandating it, you can't mandate.
Right.
Someone myself quarantine for ten days if they travel. So I would, I would remove D completely.
And E.
D in which one, I'm sorry.
Huh?
You said D in which one to strike?
D as in dog.
Okay.
In E. E as in elephant.
I wouldn't want to eliminate E, but I would change the word shall to should. Because should is a recommendation, shall is a directive.
Well, now you're saying strongly recommended, and E should be strongly recommended.
Yeah, the word essential, what's essential to one individual is not to another, and vice versa, so.
But if you change travel shall to travel should be limited, it is just a recommendation again.
Yep.
And that's, in my opinion, the intention of this section is to recommend to the employees.
Just kind of repeating A.
Yes.
I have no objection to those two changes.
Your clarification for what the travel is?
Yeah, and I think that's within the confines of what's going on. You're just suggesting, don't get outside your circle. I mean, it's real, it's there, it's spreading. All you have to do is listen to the news and, somebody went to a wedding and it went to five different states. It's not anecdotal, it's real. And if you put yourself in a situation outside of your circle, you are risking the spread of COVID. That's kind of the point. Telling everybody that and trying to define what it means is going to be very difficult to say. Otherwise, get rid of it altogether. Otherwise, get rid of it altogether, if you don't want to restrict, eliminate it.
I just don't know how I'm going to answer your question, though.
Yeah, no, I understand what you're saying. I think it's, you got to use your conscience. You got to communicate with the supervisor, you believe you're putting at risk yourself and your co-employees or the city as a whole. That's kind of what this policy is about.
If a employee tells his supervisor he's going to Chicago, say, and it's the hotspot, he comes back, does he still get granted a paid leave of absence if he, you know, says, has flu-like symptoms?
That part of this policy is the same as what it was in the spring. That part has not changed.
So if he, if he admittedly goes to a hotspot, he comes back and has flu-like symptoms, he would be granted a paid leave? It might.
Laurie?
If this, if this policy is put back in place, yes.
Could you say that again, please? If?
Yes, if this policy is put back in place as it was prior, then they would receive that.
That makes no sense to me at all that we have that in there. If somebody's going to a hotspot or.
But the paid leave came out of their accrued vacation time.
I don't believe so. There's a special pay code for that. It's like a special FMLA pay code.
So it would come out of regular pay.
Wages, yeah.
Wages. Wow, that's pretty generous.
Isn't the CARES Act still?
Yeah, it's the extension of the Family Medical Leave Act.
CARES Act.
Medical Leave Emergency Act.
Yeah, something like that. I don't know the exact.
FMLA.
I think so.
So we get funds?
Huh?
You're saying we get funds?
The employer has to pay it. Oh, you don't get special funds for that.
Well, that's what I thought. That's what I thought, yeah.
Yeah, but it's an act. It's a law.
Just, just reading over in Section 8, verbiage C, self-quarantine under the following circumstance. Simple Google search will tell you that this COVID stuff could be, the incubation period is two to fourteen days. I mean, self-quarantining for ten days without a test, whether it be a NARS or a nasal pharyngeal test, you're not going to know if you have it or not. I mean, ten days quarantine isn't going to do anything for you, especially if you are incubating for fourteen days and not showing any signs or symptoms of that beforehand. I mean, there is no verbiage in there about being tested or saying, you know, well, if you come into contact, you should go be tested. And I think that should almost be put in there, that if that's the case.
This is the verbiage from the CDC.
Yeah, but I'm, working where I work, I mean, we have to have a test if we have signs and symptoms. I mean, I'm a healthcare professional. That's only seems like common sense. I mean, if you're going to quarantine, then you should have to go get tested and then show that you have a negative test twice. If that's the case. All I'm saying is, I mean, that a ten-day quarantine, you know, we would expect you to self-quarantine for ten days. That makes no sense.
Is that ten days or ten working days?
It's ten days.
It would be two weeks if it were.
Yeah. Yeah, but still, I still think you would have to, I still think you should have to show a negative test result.
I think the idea there is not to force people to take the test if they don't want to. I think that's the concept, that the test, and maybe the test hasn't, there's a different test and there's evolution of tests. I think that, that may be more intrusive for someone to take the test.
Then you look at this language in here, you're seeing, if you are a member of your traveling party have come into contact with somebody contagious, or if you are otherwise have been reason to believe someone in your party may have contracted COVID-19, the verbiage here, you will not be able to return to work. So if we're not forcing them to show a false test, we're going to force them to sit at home and maybe burn up some vacation that they earned and were saving for something else?
Again, it's self-quarantine. So it's you getting a direction from the city, from CDC guidelines, that if you believe you've been around or contracted COVID, you self-quarantine. You certainly can choose to get a test. Nothing prevents you from getting a test. That's, I guess, the way this is written. I'm not trying to defend it per se, but it doesn't preclude you from getting a test. But to suggest that you're going to force someone to get a test just because they've been around somebody with COVID is the flip side. The test isn't fun.
I do them every day.
So you know.
What they are.
Well, they come up with a better one.
The only other one they got is a blood test, and that's to see if you got the antibodies.
What is, what is the NFL has? I want the fifteen-minute thing.
I think they have a, yeah, theirs is a quick turnaround, but those are not.
I want that one. So I hear what you're saying, Ben, but again, this is highly recommended. It's self-quarantining. It's not us peeking in and finding out. You're deciding because you believe you may have been around or infected, you're deciding.
I get it, but I mean, it just looks like, okay, well, you're going to be forced to stay home for the ten-day period, whether that be fourteen days in a row, you know what the weekends included, to Dave's point. But we're not going to tell them that you can't, that you shouldn't have a negative test result in return. I mean, that's, you. I mean, that's, you're kind of the pot calling the kettle black. I mean, you're gonna do this, but you don't have to do it this. But that's just my opinion.
Your policy?
Do we have a legal standing to force them to get a test?
I don't believe we do. If it's not in the CDC guidelines, I'd be careful. If you find it in the CDC guidelines, let's put it in. I mean, there's lots out there that can be challenged every day.
To Ben's point, though, of how.
Essential litigation all over here.
Of how it seemed that, it seemed that we've been hearing that there's a 14 day incubation. I noticed that the language, wherever it says 14, it's been striked out to put 10. It, does that indicate that the CDC now says 10 days?
Yes. And it does up above say, if you've been hospitalized, then you do have the requirement. If you're hospitalized. Essentially with COVID, I think is what it's saying there. Then you must have two negative tests.
Further discussion on this item?
So this is where we decide what we're taking out, correct? So there was conversation earlier about taking out part B.
Yep.
But again, we haven't moved officially.
Nope.
On this.
Nope.
And I do wanna point out then that going back to, um, Mr. Wirth talked about 11. He had some questions there. We do state that, um, that we require all staff and elected officials to wear cloth face, face coverings. Inside city Ripon facilities. So I don't know how that's required, but I do wanna just point that out. Personally, I, I think that's a good thing.
Where did number 11 in its entirety come from? Cause I, I recognize some CDC things, but I also recognize some, some things that are not.
Most of the work. Most of the wording from that came from League of Municipalities and City of Milton was the major drafter of that wording.
So who added 11 to this then?
I did.
Okay, so you went out, found all these things, kind of shoved them all together and then made this face covering as part of 11?
Correct.
Okay.
And a majority of 11, with exception of changing Milton to Ripon, was from their document. Couple of minor.
Well, I recognize some of it from the CDC and from my own employers.
This document in its entirety has been shown to all department heads in the city. And they all gave comments on what suggestions they would like to see changed and those have been incorporated. So the departments have all seen this.
The only thing else I noticed was missing was a. ADA or some type of anti ability to wear a mask and the, what happens in that situation as part of this? You need to give the employee the ability through ADA if that is.
Was mentioned about medical issue.
As far as the mask part?
Yes.
Did I miss it? I apologize if I did. I don't remember seeing it. Talks about if it doesn't fit to the contact, but it doesn't talk about any other issues.
Was in there. Read so many of these, it might have been a different one I read.
A lot of other policies do have it in there, so maybe you read it.
I would absolutely agree with that being in there.
You might have read it somewhere else, but I just don't see it in here.
Correct. I don't see it either. Absolutely agree with adding that verbiage, though.
Would one say, though, that face coverings that will, will not be required if it will directly interfere with the work requirement? Therefore, you know, if someone did fall into the reason that they couldn't work, relate it to ADA, that that would, that that would cover that?
I think it would have to be in there separately.
I would agree.
You have a suggestion for the best way to word that.
I, I would suggest that we pull it out of another format rather than trying to create that in the fly. So I think what, in terms of moving this forward, um, I think there's direction that we eliminate D. Change the under eight D, that eight E be changed from travel shall to should. And then we need to add ADA language to the mask section and then bring it back to the. Common council for consideration is what I would recommend. And then any other comments that anybody has, bring them forward to the mayor or the city administrator. So that we can bring a clean document back. Again, there's lots of words, there are lots of moving target here. Jim and I had that debate all the way through on travel. I think there's, there's some language. That would be my suggestion this evening. I think everybody understands the intent. Laurie, do you see a major problem not having anything ineffective at the next council meeting?
To Jolene, I think you asked a question. I don't know if it ever got answered. We as an employer can require employees to wear masks as part of their employment.
Yes.
That is legal and okay for us to do.
Yes.
Correct.
Right, that's in here. That's in here.
Correct. And we need to determine what, if it's gonna be a mask or what, what is considered proper PPE. If we're saying it's mask and mask only, then it should be in here versus a face shield or whatever else. You gotta be careful with that.
The verbiage for the face covering does refer to cloth face coverings. With the exception, you could use the surgical style mask or N95 respirator masks, how it's currently worded.
Which that's been evolving every week too, from disposable mask to cloth mask too. So that, that's a moving target as well.
Yes, it is. Current recommendation from the CDC is the cloth face mask simply to reserve the N95s for potential medical workers. At as much as possible.
If anybody has any questions on the N95s, they're hard as, they're really hard to breathe in. So if you guys wanna know, your cloth masks are probably doing, it's a little bit easier to breathe. Mr. Gallup has a surgical mask on. It's probably the easiest to breathe in. Those N95s, it is very hard to breathe.
Not bad.
So, so am I hearing that if we do not pass this, now I understand that department heads are probably providing, because they're good caring people. Uh, in Ripon, and I know them personally, that they are probably providing masks for employees if they don't have them, I assume. But that technically, unless we pass this, department heads would not be providing a mask for someone if they don't have one. Now, I know that there are places in town that we can go to that people are making them, we could get them donated. But I mean, is that a reason to pass this so that employees are provided masks if they should need them?
With this, the, the city would be required to provide them. Is my understanding that we currently are providing them to those who need them?
Our ambulance service, although they did say they're running low, so. They're getting more difficult to, to obtain.
So I do hear cases rising in our area right now. Um, and I, at one level, it feels good to table this, to put in what we need. And we have a clean copy. Um, but at the other level, I mean, this is need it now too. It sounds like to give our employees comfort that they can stay home, that they're not going to be.
This has already been approved since March.
It's been suspended since June.
But you know, this is something we, they, they know these things, though. They, they're protected under the CARES Act. They're protected under FMLA. They still have those protections even without this.
Federal protection.
I, I know where you're going with that and I can concur with that, but they do have protections out there. If they can't provide their own PPE, I would hope that our city and our department heads would have done everything in their power to help with PPE. Obviously. I know there was people willing to donate over the past few months. I believe Mr. Grant had spearheaded some of that. People could donate down by you and.
I'm a collection site.
Collection site, thank you, collection site. I'm sure if we really needed them, we could network ourselves even and find some PPE somewhere, hopefully.
National Office of Emergency Management has a surplus of masks. Just contact them, those ship boxes to you, $4,000 in a case. Free.
Thank you, Al.
Should our city do that?
We need them. Contact them. I can send you the email tomorrow morning, Laurie.
Thank you.
Going back to Ben's concern about testing, it's now a good time probably to, to state for those listening that Oshkosh does have a free testing site.
Is that open?
Drive-throughs? Any of you? Is that the drive-through?
Yeah, it's certain hours, six days a week, I think.
Thank you.
Hope it's on the state's COVID website. They have a locator page there.
Alternatively, if you have concerns over this virus and you want to get tested, you can talk to your doctor's office. And you can ask them to have a test completed. I work at Frehderd. And anybody can come on down to those testing facilities. They are drive-through and we test you in your vehicles. But your orders, your doctor's orders have to be in. You cannot just drive up and say, I wanna pass. It's not how it works. And generally, those results come back within 24 to 48 hours. If, I will tell you, there are two different types of tests. There is a nasal test, which is just inside the nostrils, right at the edge of your sinus cavity, which is obviously not comfortable. And then you have the nasal pharyngeal test, which goes further back into your sinus cavity, into the mucus pits. So that way we can get a good specimen and get an accurate test. And then you also get the back of your throat swabbed with that test if you're symptomatic. So. But with how limited the capacity and capabilities are in the greater Milwaukee. Aurora doesn't do as many. Frehderd and I believe. Frehderd is really one of the organizations that are spearheading the testing.
National Guard.
Maybe this should be brought up in the ideas for future agenda items, but I do think that this is a prime example why it could be beneficial to look on our, on our website. They have a place for community resources. You know, the fact that we could list clearly, um, the free testing site where they are in a local area. I think is a great opportunity that we could have available on our city website.
Or even a link to the COVID, I mean, link to the state site. Just a link.
Any further discussion on this item or do we leave it here and bring it back to the next meeting? Suggestions, comments?
Motion to leave it and bring it back at the next meeting?
Second?
Moved and seconded to bring this back at the next meeting? All those in favor, say aye.
Isn't there discussion?
Not on table.
But I mean, once a motion is made, don't you discuss that?
Technically, a motion to table, there's no discussion on a motion to table.
Actually, he didn't make a motion to table.
I apologize. Is there any discussion on?
There would be no discussion if he made a motion to table. Once a motion to table is done.
Technically, it's not.
But he didn't say a motion to table. He said bring it back. Correct, Ben? Sorry, I didn't mean to speak for you guys. I apologize.
So is there discussion on the motion to bring this back at the?
I didn't hear table. I didn't hear you say table, so.
Okay.
My, my point would be, so by not passing this, are we assuming, though, that mo, that the language, most of the language then is enacted right now? So we're ultimately then now, it's hard because obviously I don't think we're comfortable with how it is laid out here. But then we're also leaving tonight saying that we're not requiring city employees to wear a mask and we're not discouraging. Them not to come in. I mean, I think they would do that. Again, this is all common sense, but, um.
There's an existing state mandate for masks as well.
Yeah. Yes.
We can be more restrictive, I think.
Yeah.
Orders.
So with the governor order, they're already required, per governor's order, to wear the mask.
I think with the extension, we're not, you know, it, it would be one thing if it, the mandate ended next week. You know, but I think with it being extended another 60 days, I think bringing it back in two weeks, I don't, I don't see an issue with that. As far as the mask.
I'm sorry, I just gotta step in here. I will tell you that the department heads talk about this topic every two weeks at our staff meetings. So you need to leave here, if you do table this, understanding that we understand the seriousness of what's going on and the effects on our employees. Many of the departments have already initiated, I know my department has initiated steps to control. Certain aspects of what we're doing. We're mandating masks within our organization while we're at work, those type of things while we're on calls. So just, even though you're going to, you know, I just wanna address your concerns, Jolene, and say that. Even though you may table this, we're still addressing those things individually as a department and as an employee and as department heads. So I just wanna make sure that you understand that.
Thanks, Bill.
Any further discussion on bringing this back at the next meeting? Hearing none. All those in favor of leaving this topic for the evening, bring it back at the next meeting with those revisions, say aye.
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 Opposed? That, we'll be brought back at the next meeting. All right, project updates and staff reports. Laurie?
I have nothing.
Anniversaries?
Thank you. We have three anniversaries in September. Steve Weast from our Public Works Department.
Steve Weast from our Public Works Department, one year. Officer Tim Grenier, eight years. And our custodian Brenda Miller, 14 years.
Mike, do you have anything? Chief, anything else? Nope? All right. There is one appointment this evening for plan commission. Beth Huber, this would be for a three-year term ending April 30th, 2023. Is there a motion to approve this appointment?
So moved.
Been moved by David, is her second, seconded by Paige. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of approving Beth Huber to the plan commission, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? She is approved. I have a couple of comments for the evening on elections. Election Day is five weeks from tomorrow, November 3rd. You can check your registration status and register address online at myvote.wi.gov. You can register by mail or online until October 14th. After that, you can register in person at City Hall during regular business hours. You will need a photo ID and proof of address. You can request an absentee ballot for any reason in the state of Wisconsin until October 29th at 5:00 PM. You can make this request online at myvote.wi.gov or in person at City Hall during regular business hours as well. Absentee ballots can be mailed, dropped off in the office here at City Hall during regular business hours, or dropped in the ballot drop box located across from the dispatch window just inside the entrance to City Hall. You can also vote early in person from October 20th through October 30th. Times for early voting are Monday through Friday, 7:30 AM till 4:00 PM between October 20th and October 28th, and from 7:30 AM to 5:00 PM on October 29th and 30th. Ripon currently has enough poll workers, but if you'd like to be put on a list for backup poll workers, please contact our city clerk, Ann. Then on COVID, COVID numbers in Ripon are increasing drastically. In the last month, our infection rate has increased almost 450%. We must get this under control. To do that, we must all wear face coverings, unless you have a legitimate health issue that prevents you from wearing one. The director of the CDC, Dr. Robert Redfield, said, quote, "We have clear scientific evidence they work, and they are our best defense," end quote. This is not a time to make political statements or to choose not to wear a face covering because you personally disagree with them. We wear one, or wear one to protect your family, your friends, neighbors, and coworkers. If you don't care about them, wear one to protect yourself. COVID has affected every sector of our city. It's in our public school system, it's in the college, it's in the city government, it's in our community, it is everywhere. You all have someone, or you all know someone who has it or had it, or at a minimum, know someone who has been exposed to it. Our local hospital is at capacity. We need everyone to do their part to lower the infection rate and prevent further spread of this virus. It is simple. Wear a face covering, period. And always be safe, stay healthy, and be kind, considerate, and respectful to others. Are there any suggestions for future agenda items or comments from council members?
Going back to the example of knowing where the free COVID testings are in our area, I'm not sure if it needs to be an official agenda item, however, making it one means that we can then, the public knows that we are engaging in discussion of local resources, so I'd like to propose a future agenda item of creating a tab on our city website. I know, I think we have helpful links is already there, but one that particularly says "community resources," and I invite, because I, so many of here fellow leaders, I know that you're involved in so much, perhaps you bring, and again, I'm not sure we have to actually discuss what you bring, but bring ideas of websites of, then that would be good community resources. I would imagine things even like local AA meetings, NA meetings would be another good helpful resource to include on that, that I'd like to see officially a part of our city website.
Thank you, Jolene.
Do we need that, do we need to put that on as an agenda item, or can we just?
Rightfully to the city administrator. That's, that's one option, Jolene. I would assume that. Lori, you're familiar with how to link things together?
Not myself, but, but we have someone. But if you have suggestions, we're happy to add it. We have a lot of helpful links out there already.
So maybe we go that route, but I do like that everyone knows then that we can all maybe submit helpful community links then to, I assume, to Lori, and then also for the community to hear that if they have ideas of community links, that they can submit them to their, you know, officials.
Makes sense.
Is there a motion for adjournment?
Make a motion to adjourn. Seconded.
Moved by Howard, seconded by Ben. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.